Awesome, so I'll sort it out till eight, I'm gonna do a roll call. We have council, are we doing council members?
Geez, however you want to be.
Okay.
You're the chair.
Karen Vanderis. And then we have Economic Development Director Derek Britten. Here and then we have Mike Gonzalez, City Manager. And we have Brittany Beima Chair here, Letizia Sandoval Co-Chair here. Yeah, Perla Zepeda here. We have Karen Vandergraff here. And we have Lori Gardner here. And we have Rhea Garcia Chicon. And then that is it.
Derek, message from Jackie, can you start the livestream on the window? That popped up.
Karen maybe, that green button.
In the window.
Yeah.
There's no one there.
Mrs. Bass?
Oh, yeah.
This one very young. Karen, you gotta drop it.
Move back to the screen. Last one, I think she said something like, sure.
Hey, okay.
The green.
Let me scoot over here. No, that's where I do.
Do you wanna give him a hand?
Yes.
I was like hoping somebody would pop up.
Thank you. Where?
Go to your browser right here. And then it's that little window.
Okay.
And you are. You may have to zoom in, two different things, but it's okay, as long as you're recording.
Should I start the other one or not?
No, just, just leave it.
Okay. I'm not a fan.
I don't have that agenda.
No, and then Chicon didn't get on.
We got one, whatever.
All right, there we go. Okay, uh, so we'll close that, Agenda. Uh, we'll start with letter A, discuss which CED Commissioner will take the lead for each adopted CED Commission goal and strategy.
So. Finally got this all figured out, um, this is wonderful, but until people assign or decide they wanna do it and then start moving on it, it's just a piece of paper. So, um, generally, my recommendation is at least one person gives lead, maybe multiple, it's really up to the spirit as to how you guys wanna arrange that. And that way you're, you're able to be hit on different things and then the idea would be that those folks would just work back to the group as being important thing. How you guys wanna do that. Um, does, yeah, we went over, you guys, we went over this before I came here because I wasn't sure where things were, we went over a little bit more. Um, but this version is the final version and everybody was ecstatic with and we just need to start assign folks or go through the volunteer, um, so that we can start actually moving on these things. Because I can't do it all. I can, but I don't know how long.
You've got it.
Um, so, you know, that's, that's where my recommendation for this item, um, but again, really up to you guys, you know your strengths or you, you know your interests, so that's another thing. Maybe it's not something you've ever done before, but it's something you have a curiosity or an interest with. Um, especially if somebody else who does have that knowledge that, um, you know, pair up with them, work together. Um, but it's, it's really your guys' vision, um, you put it together, you guys developed it and my role is to just kinda help, help you guys clear, you know, get you what you need in order to do it, but first we need to know who's doing what. So we don't end up with people, you know, you're working on it, you're working on it, you're working on it, then other things in the list may not be being touched or we're not, not clear.
Can we go around and, uh, pretty much ask what they're interested in and then we can all write in, maybe as what? Yeah?
Yeah.
Do you have an extra pen?
No. Oh, there we go.
I had my handy dandy.
But I wanted that. Page two, just right there.
Karen, is it these?
No.
Align.
These are for your own goals.
Oh, my, you need two through. Six, seven, two through seven.
It's the idea, you know.
I mean, it's technically, you think, right? This is the titles, yeah.
The title, yeah. This is what I. You're going off of, yeah.
What I was talking, okay, so there's that approach to where each person takes one of these primary goals and what you want. I was looking at more.
Me too. These are actions.
These are big.
Specific.
Big goals?
Yeah.
And, and they're made up of these little action steps and then.
So each, each one of these, they take an action step then and then
Yeah.
Somebody leads it and somebody's.
That's my recommendation, um, you know, because this group will be fulfilling each of these goals along with the city and stuff like that. It's who's going to bring about each piece of each of these goals.
Action, that's what I thought, that's what I was getting.
So we're gonna basically then do one of the, one page at a time? How, how, cause how would, we would, we would all be having something to do with each page or each?
Well, that's, that's again, that's how you guys wanna operate.
I'm asking, I'm asking you if, if, if that is, I mean, do how, how will that work if both ways?
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is each person, we, we've got this list, so yes, each page, each goal. Figure it out, now, maybe not everybody's on each goal, you know, that's the group, but we need to be able to know who's addressing what aspects. Um, Considered Business Lines, I can help local entrepreneurs understand and navigate city processes. Well, you want or two, so it'd be kind of that go-to person, so let's say it's Perla. Somebody comes to you, you're like, hey man, go talk to Perla, Perla will hook you up. I'm just, you know.
Yeah, right, right.
Um, and then Perla will go, oh, this is what our group's doing, whatever.
So if we did it, this, if we did it. Yeah, I'm just wondering the timeline.
So what, I, I, I totally get like what you're trying to ask, what I thought was if, if we wanted to assign as a lead for each goal title, right? It doesn't necessarily mean you're blocked into that because you might go to page four and like one of the items in someone else's targeted area that you could help them with.
Right, right.
So I thought that that would be a little bit more, we're gonna hit everything instead of us focusing on page one and all these tabs. Um, it's gonna open the door where everyone's gonna do something and then we can all chime in on each category and still be a part of it if we wanted to. Right, does that make sense?
So then you would assign.
So for example, me, I was like from day one, I want to do number one. Sunny Side will be known for prioritizing small business development. In that, these categories, I'm like, yes, some of them and other ones, I'm like, ooh, I don't know, but it'll tie into the chamber. So.
Gotcha.
Um, for me, uh, I looked at it that way and then so for example, on Letizia, she's big, everybody knows, what is Letizia big on? Parking, right? So I knew up right off the top of my head that Letizia is gonna be probably lead on that. And there are certain areas inside of that that I could help with it without taking on the lead role. So that way you guys don't feel like you're, you're tied into everything on your, um, gotcha.
And my understanding is this, there is no order of priorities, it's not like one is the priority and sets us back.
Okay.
They're already doing for you, you know.
And I agree because at this point, you just need to start doing something versus just sitting around and trying to do it perfectly.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And another thing that I would also like to see would be like City Council, an example, City Council, we all have, um, like I'm an example, a liaison to this committee, Julia Hart is a liaison to other committees. And under our names, on, under the City of Sunny Side, you could actually tap our names and when you tap our name, you could see what each council member is a liaison to. So it would also be neat so that our community and the residents can have access to. It's exactly how all of your guys' names are added into the Economic and Development Commission for everyone to be able to tap Letty's name or Perla's name or Karen's name. And then we would be able to see, oh, okay, Perla's helping small businesses, she's helping set up the ribbon ceremony, so let me call her. So she could help me guide. Or, okay, Brittany, she's gonna, or like Letty's gonna be in charge of parking, I'm having a parking issue, who, who can I talk to?
That's more specific.
Who can I direct my issues with? Okay, Letty, I'm dealing with this and that way she's able to bring it back to the commission.
We have picked this before, we have picked, um, some ideas and I have. It's like, I think this is, is the new one or is this the old one, like in the back end? And I have number four with Lori, so I'm not sure if we're still keeping the same one, if I could do each other.
So, our homework, I guess was for all of us to have already.
Yeah, we kinda know where we're. Yeah, we kinda know where we wanna be, um, it's just.
Going around maybe now and just.
Yeah, it's going on too, yeah.
What's happening with that boys and girls?
Um, well, right now, I've, we've talked to, uh, the Executive Director. Yeah, that's something I was gonna bring up in here. So the onus right now is on us to go visit the Proster site and then come back with some ideas as, as far as what does the community want? Um, a cou- a couple of things I'm exploring, so I've talked to the church next door. Um, they're really interested in programming that with some nonprofits. We just talked to a group of nonprofits, ma- mainly it was Rod's house, but um, about perhaps using the community center, so there's a lot of balls in the air. Um, the main thing that I'm extrapolating from public is, and especially nonprofits, is there's a necessity for office space that can be programmed for, for, for youth, for good things, right? The, the Boys and Girls Club, it was a minimum, they want you to do a year to a year and a half of just yeoman's work, research. And it didn't sound like they were gonna be the ones that give us much support doing that, so that that's where I need to get a little bit more clarity from Boys and Girls Club to, to say like, just how much support are you gonna give us slash, you know, who needs to be at the table? Cause they kinda left it, you were in that, you know, they kinda left it like.
Yeah, they, they want us to do it and that's great, they're all for it, it's just they need, they said that they need our leaders to step up and either donate and that's what Proster did. Everybody stepped up and.
That's a huge part, that's a huge component too, like, we're gonna have to go on like a, a big campaign and ask for big donors, so my gut tells me like that's, that's kind of the marathon, you know, the sprint which I think is attainable is maybe the use of our community center. And then perhaps the use of this church, cause the church was much more amenable than I thought, you know, I met with, um, gentleman named Daniel Miranda, who is like the regional director.
Arkansas or something like that?
Yeah, he's out of Spokane and he, you know, he manages like sixty Methodist churches around the Pacific Northwest. And home, home base for him is Spokane, so, so what he asked me to do was get a group, not too many, but really what he, what he defined as sustainable nonprofits that that could come to the table, that he's not, they're not interested in just giving free space. So I'm thinking groups like OIC, Rod's House, um, I don't know, you guys tell me.
My council that, that has inspired.
Yeah, groups.
They're amazing, yeah, and me.
So you're done for the nonprofit office space.
Right, cause what, what the church is interested in is providing, you know, there's twenty rooms and they're providing space for nonprofits at a very reasonable cost. And maybe doing kind of like a inter-local agreement of some sort with the city. To where maybe we cut the grass and, you know, if we have to change the filters on the HVAC, maybe we do that. And then we, we, um, pull, pull our resources together to pay the, the utility bill. So you know, I, I mean, that, that was a real possibility, which I was actually shocked, you know, that they were, that he was like, oh yeah, you know, we wanna use it for something. We're recognizing that it's been there for four or five years, I believe, empty. And it's just a massive, I don't wanna say waste of space, but it could be utilized or something.
They're paying whatever they're paying on it.
Right.
Who's, who's paying on it to keep it going?
Just the church itself.
Probably the, probably the diocese.
Yeah, so, and that's, you know, that was my assumption.
Great school and she's, she's very little.
Yeah, she's, she only just has those few rooms there on the first floor.
Yeah, that's not covering the whole.
No.
No, 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 and she's like a real, and they, she's only in the, the front gym part, you know, and I guess since COVID, they've stopped utilizing like the whole church, so I did a full tour and I was shocked how big it is.
It's huge.
It's a huge church and, um, so yeah, you know, I, so I've come away with I guess a lot of hope and possibility, but it's now it's like, okay, how do we bring all these pieces together, cause you know, I look at that building and I, I, I said you could have a Boys and Girls Club in there with other.
Especially if there's a gym there.
With other things.
And it's actually walking distance from school because
And that's.
Walking distance from the community center, it's a jock.
That's the big worst problem.
And that was, that's what I was telling the church too, so, yeah. So anyway, that's kind of my report on that, so I, I have a lot of hope, but there's like, I feel like I got all these bulbs going, okay, where do I, where do I go from here? So.
Um, no, yeah, we'll go around the room and, and tell every, everybody what kinda speak on what they wanna do as far, so we're doing the front page of the goals. That everybody.
This is vaguely names on it, is that supposed to go on?
Yeah, I know, everybody has them.
Yeah, that's just my extra one.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't think you had it.
At least my old one.
This is the new one. We're just, I think.
That's the same, it's just, if you've got your backup from the last, um, last month, it is the same document as last year.
I'll take, uh, annually approve upon development feasibility. And Sunny Side will be the leaders for residential development, the road acting committee. Yes, two and three, um, if I were to choose a, a backup, it would be five.
So, see, you want to do two and threes, that you're saying? Are we in this one?
No, we're going lower.
Okay.
Well, I had here number four, um, safe and clean, walkable streets, but I, I thought we had a backup, like, I think it was Lori's backup or I don't know if that's, we're still doing that or?
Yeah.
Like, like I will help, be helping Lori.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
So what are you choosing on your hand?
The, um, number four, which is gonna.
So Lori is lead on that one?
We want the, we want the whole, we want this whole downtown to look good, like to be.
Love it, clean.
Clean, but also, um, inviting and, and, and everything to be all cohesive, not the same color, it's the same.
Well, you don't want stuff to clash.
Right, yeah.
Are we going around, are we just doing these numbers?
Yeah, so then, yeah, so skipping me?
Yeah. Lori, Lori say four.
I'm gonna do four and I could tag team on with someone else on a different one, but I, I mean, I can identify with everything but number seven, so.
Change the five, I found.
I could do that.
I can do that, I'm thinking, I'll do four and five. I think you'd be great for agricultural though too. Number seven. Agriculture is so depressed right now, except for cattle.
But you have, I have a hard time thinking like what, how are we gonna get this all, you'll be excited about egg and.
I mean, if, if you take on seven, I would definitely help you with that, cause. Okay, I'll, I'll do something with it, yeah, it's just that the egg economy is really depressed. Well, we're down a limit today, I mean, it's just not, there's not anything good right now that our reps are excited about. Except for cattle.
That's what was.
Except for cattle, exactly, and we're like, we're gonna have some support now, yes.
It may be, it may be, you know, again, Sunny Side's a city, it's not rural. Um, it may be that where we can best serve the agricultural activities and growth is through support and, and those types of things as opposed to for example, you know, there's.
Farmers' market.
Well, there's, there's that where.
Our community. At the one time we looked into community gardens, what, who was I, where was I gotten here?
We're also, we're also looking at this.
What community gardens on like. The whole market like a San, like a Santa Monica, um, their farmer's market they have and I know Proster is the competition though, so you cross here, got that going and it's running with that farmer's market. So can we still compete without, you know?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm meeting tomorrow with Leah Eddie, they bought Bill's Berry Farm recently.
Oh, Leah Eddie? Yes, they're so sweet and.
I'm actually, um, where the city is working with, was been approached by Echo Yakamal to locate downtown at Farmer's Market on six A.M.
Say that again, who is?
Madison, Echo, Eco, Eco Yakamal.
I see, I see the logo.
Eco Solutions.
Yeah, I see the logo in my head.
Yeah, can you give the group a, a little once over, cause they, they wanna do a farmer's market every.
Well, I would like a farmer's market.
So every other Sunday, so they're, they're looking at Sunday because most others, in order to not compete with everybody that plays on Friday and Saturday and Thursday and Wednesday.
I love Sunday.
Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, the Friday one's okay, but the Wednesday and Thursday ones, man, I, I frankly feel that they're not really good because most people, I mean, there's a very limited market that can go to a farmer's market between nine and three P.M. on a Thursday. Um, you know, it's a very distinct group, um, but Sunday, I was, I was like, you know, let's go and compete with church, but then she's like, yeah, and they're looking at, um, and now this is from setup to take down. Um, would be six to four, six A.M. to four, um, and then I just met within.
Six to four?
Six A.M. is set up, um, they're gonna run it, if I remember actually, to two or three.
Eight to three?
Something like that.
They have to be three because you go to church, you tell, and then if you.
Well, it, it, you know, it'll be how they wanna run.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying, yeah.
It might, because the application that they submitted for the gravel parking, they're that gravel area next door to the port and, um, that had to have a start finish, like total amount of time you have in your mind, it's at six to four, so. I think cleanup's gonna be one to two hours.
Right here on the corner. That's six, that's six to Madison.
Oh, that gravel across from.
So that's on, that's actually on fifteen.
When they have that ale fence.
Both of them.
Yeah, when the ale fence is.
Both of those properties, if that doesn't work out, the gravel parking lot doesn't work out, then what they, we'll look at, um, shutting off that section of six for that, um, for Sunday, because that section of six, the length to the, the width, the length of the park, there's no access, there's nothing to get to, so it, it, it'll be a little inconvenient, cause somebody would have to go maybe half a block down in there or on fourth, but, um, parking's gonna be interesting, but that's, that frankly, I
But you're usually, you know what?
Every farmer, every form of market I've ever been to doesn't have.
Usually you're in and out though quick, you know, it's not like.
But there's sort of a parking and the park, yeah.
But Pasco.
Yeah, is that them, the eco, okay.
Pasco doesn't have clutter keying at the park, I can see that. I don't think park, in other words, people don't have an expectation to park per se.
What is it offering?
Cool.
So that is, council process, community garden, I'm meeting with, um, folks that showed up, uh, yeah, most of them, that was yesterday. Last week's council meeting, um, interested in starting a new community garden program for the city. That was a, uh, yes, we are a, so, um, they're looking to do that, a meeting with them on Thursday at eight thirty to see what their, their vision is, uh, what we can do, potential locations, various other things. Um, that's a kickoff meeting kind of deal just to see, and then once I have that, get an idea from that and we'll see where it develops from there. Potentially the community center, um, who knows, you know, maybe the road out on, well, it's kinda out there. I was gonna say seventy, the Seventy Ray Place, the old Tucker Sellers.
Uh, you mean for the, you have to build for the community garden, you have to build a walk, I think.
Most likely, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's, or multiple locations. There's no need to only have one and then we can also have different dynamics and types.
Grandview would.
Because there's, but so, yeah, well, but we'll see how that all flushes out and then, um, I'll report back next month as to where and what's going on with that. In fact, that'll happen with those.
We, we tried all the, like, I don't know, this ten years ago, we had, and we tried to do it out at the Metacross from Walmart, but our soil was really high pH, so it wasn't really conducive, I don't know why either, but, or alkalite wasn't conducive. So they did grow some, there was a, who was that guy then? Friends of, um, Jerry Hawk. Um, oh, he funded him and everything, he came in here and started, he had raised best, and then they also started Farmer's Market. But if the farmer, farmer market, you, you're gonna have to do a big promotion to get people to start going there, you know, some kind of promotions or.
That'll be.
I think people are ready for that. Or something, you know, you'll have to really get off the word to get support for the people coming in there, otherwise you lose all the vendors, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you can, you can tie them with eggs, maybe you can get some people selling eggs. You know, cause eggs are so high right now, it could be good.
Yeah.
Have a process point incentive or you can have pie special, I mean, like maybe Bill's Berry Farm will team in and bring special berries or to promote them and, you know, you could get a lot of.
You have to get, you have to get people involved that will draw more people. And there are people that will draw more people, I mean, you just have to think about it, you know, like, you know, that's the only way it'll work. And it has to be.
Marketing.
Yeah, it has to be.
It's all marketing.
Yeah, just the, the right people get.
It's gotta be marketing and what's there. Cause if I go and there ain't none there, I ain't coming back.
And you get variety of things there, to attract the most people, it's like, you know, Boise, I've been to Boise's market, which is crazy busy for blocks.
Pullman's is really cool too.
And the, one of the first ones I was at was Santa Monica. My daughter, my daughter went to college there and, my gosh, I'm so impressed, and then they had food truck Fridays too, like once a month. You know, and people are looking for places to go, I always go to a food truck Friday, for, first on Fridays, what was that called, I don't know. But I'm just saying like, you know, you get a lot of. And then.
There's been a bunch of different competitions.
Did you, you chose your, your thing? And then Perla, what are you choosing?
So I chose number one and, um, number five. And then, um, if you need backup and if I have to have another one, I would say number three. Um.
Awesome.
Those were my, those were my three.
I wanted to do four and five. Okay, so that's, um.
Good backup. I think they're all spoken for, right?
Well, no, except for six.
Number seven, number six.
Number seven, number six.
Six.
Something. I have no idea. I think we all can.
Yeah, I can't.
I, I, I would agree, I don't feel like a single person.
And, you know, all of these things coming together help bring our identity.
Yeah.
It does transform towards that.
Zone in, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially, I like strong, right, that words. Well, back to this activities thing too and interest, cuz I said I would have some, even, even I'll stick that for like, you take that one too?
I did.
Yeah.
On that one too.
Or I went on number five, because, you know, I still wanna have, be able to ride your bikes, you know?
Oh, yes, mom.
Absolutely, well, we're talking about. I live in the country and I wanna be able to ride my bikes up where I'm close here.
We have so much asphalt, there's no reason why we do not have.
I know, so I really wanna look at into the bikes, you know, having bike paths and you can ride around and meet your friends.
To say it's just paint is too simplistic, but there's, I think, more things we can deal with regarding bike and ped activity and those, um, connections and stuff.
And then also the, you know, the youth activities, where, I don't know where Parks and Rec does nowadays, we call the budget, sure to come with.
Well, we have a pool.
What's going on? You know, I, my husband's on that rotary, wants to get the money to fund that.
Community Center is open for rentals and that's about it.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the community center, it's just being rented out and it's been rented, you know, the. Pretty messy. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty high and as far as.
It calls.
The pool, um. We'll obviously be funded it through the Utilities Act and then the Rotary donation. And so we've, we've just kind of shifted responsibilities, so Mitch Ziegler from Public Works is gonna step up and kind of take a larger role. In working with the lifeguards and just the day to day operations, I think, um, that's gonna kind of be the trickiest thing is just the lifeguard element. He's already, he already does the chemicals and all that, so we're just asking him to take a little bit larger role because it used to be Mary. That managed the lifeguards and, and then we're, we're gonna try to manage lifeguards a little bit more efficiently, so.
That's good.
So, you know, both, both, uh, Raul left for Grandview to take, uh, the wastewater supervisor job. And then Andrew Robinson also also left for Pasco, so I have a cause as the interim director. Um, but you know, it's a, you know, for me, it's a good, it's a good opportunity to reshape that department with, with folks that I would like in there, so. So, uh, we're gonna put that out pretty soon and and start recruiting for new public works director, um.
What about Parks and Rec, do you have a person in there?
No, well, Parks and Rec is.
There's a board, right?
Yeah.
Are there?
There's a Parks, there's a Parks and Rec board.
Person is the staff member being paid for Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so Mitch Ziegler, so he's, he is our Parks, yeah, he's our Parks manager.
Oh, he is doing.
So, yeah, so Mitch Mitch has been with the city probably like thirty years and most of that is the Parks manager, so. You know, he's responsible for like the day to day, cutting the grass, managing the pool, you know, kind of.
What about like having sock, you know, organizing soccer for youth or T-ball or any of that, what's going on?
They're all private ones, but there hasn't been anything officially that has been.
So one thing, there was a gentleman that came, if you watched the meeting from yesterday, um, from the CERC Soccer Club. So he has reached out to the city to partner with us, all they need is the, are the fields and then they can organize it, you know, there is a bit of a cost. Which could be a barrier for some people, but you know, the, the league itself is, I mean, it's centered for all valleys, so it's not necessarily, it's just for Sunnyside. People, um, so I've got a follow up with him today as a matter of fact, so I've got, I've got a call with him today. Just to kind of figure out, you know, coming out of there and the counselors can kind of give their perspective on what they thought. The, the thing I like about CERC, you know, when you approach me, they're super organized, they have an infrastructure, they have. They have like the support mechanisms, so it's not like he's starting from scratch and, you know, so they're all over the state. Uh, their kind of regional headquarters is in Spokane, so, and he's already started, you know, he's got the footprint in Granger, so I feel like. It's a great opportunity for what, I think this year is kind of like, whatever happens, happens, you know, at least we're, we're trying and I think it'll be good, um.
Cal Ripken is, is doing it this year.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and that's something, you know, I've heard of.
Alright, they're doing their signups. Baseball.
Hearing things about baseball in town, it doesn't seem to be as popular as it used to be.
It is, it was.
And after basketball, they're, they're gonna T-ball.
You can't, it was bad, I went.
And get into.
Some small stuff around here, Cal Ripken. That's good, but.
They're great, 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 great.
So, yeah, so that's, that's kind of on the soccer front.
Yeah. That's what I seen online.
No, I was thinking about the T-ball because I thought the T-ball ran through the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, my understanding is that's it, run through there, so.
Cuz I remember Sheri Holden and her granddaughter were a couple of the coaches for one of the T-ball.
It was great, last year's program was super good for T-ball.
Really busy, it was huge.
But right now, the.
That was very running up. The city doesn't have any organized youth activities, they're just, can soon probably get the pool going.
Yeah, I would say not, not having the three staff members there is.
What happened to three staff members?
So they were let go because of the budget, so.
That's what we do in San San, as an answer listed objection to cutting youth programs.
Yeah.
That's what we do, whenever there's a budget for shortfall, recreation and kids get cut, they just do. And that's why it's so wonderful, the Rotary, Rotary, I'm just giving my three cents here.
Oh, yeah.
And round the president. Um, but I've seen this happen over since we started having Parks and Recs in Sunnyside back in early nineteen seventies. Um, whenever there was budget cuts, it always came down to the parks and rec, always. The pool never was closed, the parks were never closed, but if there was any kind of organized activity for kids. Day camps, um, any of that sort of thing, this, the city is always cutting those first. And I don't know what their mentality is because right behind that comes an increasing gay recruitment, it just is a given and.
Well, the fact of the city didn't raise anybody's utility rates for three years, there could have been some money there.
That's not even, that's not even.
So there's budget shortfalls and.
No, what I'm saying is, is rather than, rather than raise those rates, because work, they would cut programs.
I know, they should raise some other rates, cuz I mean, we all have our.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that, I won't disagree with you on that at all.
Can I put my, I think we should say, you know, to the agenda.
Oh, yes.
There's like our conversations, we can help them afterwards.
Alright, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I guess, I just didn't know what happened with Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
I want activities for you, we're gonna have to find other ways of how we do that, yeah, okay.
Um, did, you're done with your?
Yeah.
And then Letitia, did you, you did your?
She was.
She was four and five.
Okay, awesome, and then we'll all take number six, yeah, great.
All the six. I'm four and, and. Five.
Okay, awesome, so we're all assigned, um, let's see.
Do you guys all wanna go, so what, what's your theory with the, um?
Oh, yeah, what's our next step after?
Well, that's, so now on the next page, you have all these.
Okay, so that, so this would.
How do you guys wanna address those?
So each person that has their number, like, number two would be Perla, right?
You're two.
No, she's number one.
I'm one.
Maybe that's like.
I'm, oh, wait, I'm two.
It was fake, but what?
I'm.
That's funny.
So who has what?
Perla.
I'm, I'm two and three.
And I, I'll leave if you need me.
Yeah.
Four, yeah.
Number four is, uh, Lori, I'm gonna be seeing myself.
Lori's.
That's a good, that's a good.
Good job. You stop going.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, that was, we're on page three, oh, okay, you guys are jumping.
We're organizing.
And then number five is.
But also Britt and.
Oh, number five.
Yeah, I'll, I'll help on that.
We're on five, and that's myself, Erin, Perla.
Everyone's.
Number five.
Everyone's on five, um, and I can chime in if you guys need me, if not.
Who wants to take lead on five?
I'll take lead on five.
That's a good one.
I had Perla on five.
Yeah, but, uh.
It's on there, so.
Karen and Brittany.
And there's all seven.
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody's.
Everybody.
We all wanna be part of that one, okay.
Yeah.
And number six is all.
Six is everybody, but we basically all, cuz it's only like missing one person stay.
Yeah, and then seven is Karen and, um.
Brittany.
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 And you're helping.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll help with that one too.
Yeah, I'll, we'll help Karen on number seven.
Okay.
Wow.
Karen has lead and Brittany and Lauren.
Yeah.
Only if you need me.
You see how long, safe walkable streets is, isn't it?
Yes, I know, that's all that thing. You gotta help rocks.
No, we are.
I'm at four.
I'm leaning forward, I'm leaning right over.
Lori, yeah.
Lori, myself.
Are we talking about?
Number four, clean and safe?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's Lori, Letitia, Chacon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Perfect. Hey.
Alright, I'll be.
Okay, so then we're gonna go through these and see which ones pertain to each other. That way we actually know when we go home, when we're doing our homework, you know, and stuff like that. Um, so the number two page or the second page, second page will be on a priority, prioritizing small business development, that would be me. Right?
Me.
Are you sure you don't?
I'm helping, no, I'm helping, you need.
I'll put, I'll put Brittany.
No.
She apparently.
I have number three.
I don't have page two. I don't have page one on my, in my book.
That's what it is.
Okay.
I have a little one.
I don't. It's technically page one is this.
Yeah, so this is.
That's why, that's just page one, and page two is.
That's why everyone's confused, yeah.
You don't have.
I do remember, yeah.
This is getting that numbers.
Consider page one, yes, but it's related to two, yeah, number two.
That's not.
Although we're people.
Yeah.
Oh, you have page numbers.
Yeah, right, yes.
Numbers.
Yeah.
That would've been smart, but.
Page three. Okay, so page three is you.
I mean, Brittany.
Okay.
That's actually the.
Page four.
And with Perla, five is number four.
Yes, Lori, Letitia, Chacon.
It's.
Number five.
When you go by page. There hasn't already gone by page.
Now we're doing Lori, Perla, just to make sure.
Lost after who's what.
What is that, what are you? Six.
It's number six.
Six is everyone, right?
Yeah, it's everyone.
Karen.
Seven is all, pretty much, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, who's the lead on that one?
The agriculture?
I am.
On the.
Karen, Karen.
Okay, no, it wasn't number seven, oh, sorry, we're talking about page numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, well, that's.
So, number six is all.
The.
Number six is all, yeah.
And my number nine?
Hey, wow.
I got you.
Alright, guys, now we have homework.
Alright, so what's next?
Brittany don't want to.
Chamber of Commerce.
Where it was.
The discussion of next steps, we're starting the City of Sunnyside Chamber of Commerce.
That at the last meeting, um, Mike pulled up this.
I have a search chamber.
And so, sound laid out there, um, I think we've discussed it a lot. I mean, kind of, yeah, I think that's prudent, that that's just act as the initial form, um. Then also, you ready to five oh one C, oh, it's a C six, uh, let's try to see, alright, um. But regardless, you gotta start to get more, what's nice here is, so, assess the need for a change, yeah. Done that, I mean, I mean, this room pretty much has determined, um, and then we hear it all the time, the business advisory meetings and things. So, that part's done, um. So, you guys have been to other chambers, um, do identify gaps and opportunities, gaps, so. Again, I think we're done, we're past preliminary, um, but that's just my kind of interpretation of what I'm saying. You know, so now we need to establish a steering committee.
It's important to get the business leaders to buy into it and you, you know, that you have accountability and, um, it's gonna. Be carried forward and continue and not get locked in the weeds like what's happened with the last one. They need some strong business leaders and.
We had that with that business advisory group, and there was like, how many people, fifty people in that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's.
That's what I'm saying, the coin.
There, there, I think you're gonna have to get, how are you gonna narrow it down then, how are you gonna get people, who are you gonna get on the steering committee?
Oh, on the committee.
Yeah, that's.
We, you want representatives of different types of businesses to start.
We wanted to get.
So how are you gonna, how are you guys gonna select those people from that, maybe that group, you wanna use that group, but you just have to get the buy, you know, people to buy into it.
We're gonna be.
So we just need to create a, like, a basically like a. A flyer for that next meeting and, uh.
I think you should look, think about, you know, who is there, who you feel like would be good approach them, explain it, see if they're interested instead of.
You know, it's a big commitment cuz you have to meet at least once a month or.
Well, maybe just comments. Say hello to everyone and your interests that come forward.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of two, there's two approaches, you need to target it. Where just, I think it was Karen that said that, um, you approach the people, it might have been you, Lori.
Okay.
Um.
It doesn't matter.
The, uh, because that, because look, you got that group, you're gonna get inundated, you're gonna get twelve people from one industry, three from one, none from somebody. You know, one of them that doesn't exist or that you need, you know, so there is something to be said to that, once you, remember, this is the steering committee. This is not the actual chamber or even the board.
Interesting, but it's pretty important cuz you're in the mission and the goals.
Yeah.
They gotta have the.
Honestly, my suggestion is targeted, you guys go out or you guys figure out, you guys are all representing, um. Aspects, so if you wanna be part of the steering committee, then you already are there and you just need to fill in gaps. Um, of what's, say, quote, missing from this group, um, as far as businesses, um. You know, banks, realtors, you, you know, um, retail. Ag, um, and these are very broad, you know, restaurants, which are completely meteries, completely different, you know, basically those different. My, my, you know, they have different ways of running, you know, um, or operations or services that are provided, legal. That's another one that if you really want on your steering committee is somebody that's a lawyer, um, because there's. And then your steering committee optimally, um. Will also become part of your board, but some just do it for the express purpose of setting it up and then they get out of the way and let other men for that. It's nice at least, especially with the first cycle, to have the folks that are doing the steering, you know, that have been there from day one, that know all the history. To being that board, at least to some degree, whether it's the whole board or a portion of it. Just to maintain that continuity and knowledge.
I have a question, from the group that you said there's fifty people and. I have a question, from the group that you said there's fifty people as a business advisory, what's it called, business advisory?
Uh, we're calling it the business advisory.
So, who started it and who runs it and how?
So, it's, uh, this, this.
This is the thing that meets on Wednesday at noon?
Yes.
Oh, okay, the Wednesday thing at noon.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a monthly group and 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 it's not intended to be a, a chamber type.
Could you maybe get people interested in starting a chamber from that pool of people?
Oh, really, it's really had a big discussion.
Yeah.
Life's.
The need is there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's definitely the desire, it's just. And the wor- the thing that I've been grappling with, I, I don't think the city. Should be like advertising, like, hey, come be a part of the chamber, you know, I, I think it has to be organic, cuz I, I don't think our role is. Although, although, although this group is working on that, you guys are all business leaders and, you know, people in business, so.
Should you have, should you have the people from there nominate people to be on there?
Uh, you know, I, I, I think we'd need some legal advice, like in terms of, we just kinda threw out. Like, you know, like an organic nomination process, it could get. Yeah, it, yeah. And that.
Because, because you can't. You just.
How many, how many do we need?
That's what I mean, like, how, how?
Yeah, what's the, what's the member count that we need?
We need the president, the vice president, the treasurer coming on.
Adam and Mom, you'll need president, vice president.
Yeah.
So, before we can begin there. We gotta plan the five oh one C, no? I thought the last time that city manager called the attorney, he stated, we started here and. When I asked like, hey, we should invite some different, um, organization leads to come in on it. We agreed we weren't going to announce it until it's actually started and then we can officially say, okay. Uh, we can now publicly.
Yeah. Alright, so the steering committee is the one that's gonna basically. Create and form the five oh one C.
Okay. So, we don't wanna create it here.
And then.
We're not gonna create it here, I talked about that.
What do you mean here?
What, in this meeting, in, in this meeting, in this group, can we, or?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, oh, that.
That's what, that's what Ben said.
I don't like. That's what I, how I understood it.
That's what I was thinking.
So, we're gonna create it and then once it's officially out. Once we've got everything, then we can announce it and then.
And, and then this group as the C E D commission does not run it anymore. What it does is, you know, it's obviously can be an area where we discuss. Or things like that, what's going on at the chamber, but it's, it, it becomes broke free. Now, the fact that all of you also sit on the board is irrelevant, you can sit on seventy two boards if you want to. Um, you know, that, that's not an issue, it's, it's the, once that five oh one C three is official. Then that's when it goes, flies off on its own. And that organization is separate from the city, the city will work in partnership and alignment to some degree with the, um, chamber, but it is, it is exactly, it's not us.
So. Um. My question is, because I, we're, we're ready, we were. Ready last year for this, um, so if we start this, the question that I had and that I still have is. If we start it, the first thing we need is a five oh one C, we gotta get the bylaws and the, and the five oh one C established, right?
That's what the steering committee.
Okay, so if we, if we start that, there's. Quite a bit of a cost to get this started, we have to hire either an attorney or someone who knows how to do that. That is what my question was, do we start looking for, um, business, uh. Owners in the community to help donate to this fund, or is this gonna come from the city, because that's what's holding me back from like, let's do this.
So, we can't come from the city.
Okay, so then that's crossed off, then how do we raise the funds?
The business is usually paid along to the chamber, don't they?
Yes, that's, but we're not ready to announce it yet.
So, maybe the funds will come back to us once it starts, you know, once the membership fees come in, just because right now, we just need to get it started, so we need to get that foundation going.
Okay.
The most expensive ass.
So, can we start that a five oh one C?
How much? That's what we're doing now.
The five oh one C three is not that expensive to prepare, it's just a secretary of state.
Oh, how, how not expensive is it?
For like fifty bucks.
Cuz like if it's, if it's manager, I, yeah, I could.
Yeah.
Any of.
Sponsor them.
We could sponsor it here and get that started, I just thought that.
As a business, as a member of the steering committee.
And then in order to even like start your Washington Secretary of State, we already need to have the.
The names.
The names of like the treasurer, secretary.
Those are already.
You need to input that in that same moment.
Oh, I know.
Maybe in that sense.
So, what else?
Would you do that in your steering committee?
Yeah, so with a lot of, um, nonprofits or new commissions or very nonprofit to do, they, they use like place, like people to have like a placeholder.
Uh-huh.
Where it's like Karen is the treasurer, Pearl is the vice president, Lori is the president. And temporarily, and then you could always go back and change the names. You just make an amendment.
Cause we just need to.
You could make an amendment.
We don't need to overthink it.
Yeah, you could just make an amendment on the secretary of state.
No. Okay.
So, that's.
Could you help us with that?
Yeah.
You might, but somewhere between two hundred and seventy five and six hundred dollars.
Oh, that's not, that's, we have.
Or.
I was thinking, I was like, I was like, I can cover some of it, but I don't.
Yeah, we can donate some.
Yeah.
So, that's it, that's what we need, we just need to create like the foundation, and that's where I see what Derek is saying, the C E D could help create that foundation, just get everything started and then start.
Okay. Yay.
One of your primary targets, or a member at Starington, is a lawyer.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I mean.
If you only have one person in this group.
Is it sure it's your Karen?
Maybe a lawyer. We need some legal effect, something, something that's having for those.
Well, just a member.
Pretty membership for your team.
We're just for the.
I mean, lawyers are even in sunny side.
Can we do one person?
Yeah.
For us, for free?
Yeah.
For the.
The dancer.
Okay.
I was just looking into articles in a corporation of fifty bucks, you can expedite it for an additional fifty, then. If you get, you're gonna have to have a business license and sunny side, so that's.
And then the business license range from like a hundred.
Yeah.
Like eighty, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty depending.
So, it's not, it's not a huge startup cost, it's just the amount of wrangling the people up. Who wanna be a part of it, and I think that's a good, if you can find a lawyer, that's always a good venture.
Who are you guys working with for lawyers in town?
I gotta call a few.
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't.
Yeah, I, I have a few attorneys that we can reach out to. They just specialize in different things, but.
Because see their time, lawyers have, have community hours, they're supposed to every year. Um, there's, there's different ways that a, a legal, a lawyer could assist and potentially be loaded at no cost to your organization.
Okay. Um, so the million dollar question, what are we gonna call it?
So, we have.
We need that, we need that for the business.
Okay. And you call, and are you guys okay that I make calls?
No, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll.
Get up on the floor.
I think that's, that's. Because the reality is, if I'm in Grandview, I'm just a member of this chamber eighty two.
Yes, yes, it is.
So, where, where the others in the valley, it's our Chamber of Commerce.
Grandview and.
Yeah, Grandview has one.
Villa.
Villa has one, yeah.
I'm sure.
Prosser has one, Grandview, Brazier.
Does it talk, and it just still have one? Grandview supports our business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Support our.
Villa.
Main Street.
Still like that.
You see Main Street doing stuff, not Chamber.
No Chambers too.
So, what if I call my. But Main Street has a lot more stuff for Grandview than Chamber.
Right, and just know that the Main Street and the Chamber can be the same entity.
Yeah.
In other words, the Chamber can run your Main Street program. Generally speaking, when you don't have a chamber or, or the chamber is maybe not the party you wanna play with. Then you go also, that's also where you'll see the Main Street nonprofits pop up. But it's quite common for those programs to be getting done by a single chamber or business advisory groups or various downtown. Um, you know, business organizations and stuff, all sorts of those things, so. The Main Street thing, um, yeah, I think that, but just remember that if you do one, it's not exclusive of the other, and in fact, Main Street can probably be one of the top first projects Chamber launches on.
That'd be.
That's what I think.
Exactly. And it can't be, the chamber cannot be called.
Sunny Side.
No, I think lower va- the Lower Valley.
Suns.
Lower Valley Chambers before, and that's why I like it.
Oh, like the Lower Valley.
The Lower Valley Chamber, because if we go with sunny side again, it makes it a little, it's, it, it will.
Yeah.
Even though anybody that knows about chambers knows that you can join any chamber.
That'd be cool.
Um, if you're willing to pay.
Yeah, about the Chamber, it's the center of the Lower Valleys.
Yeah.
Pat Cusell was part of the, that, and she would, she could come in and, and help us. I'm, I don't, I don't know what she would, how much she would wanna do, but she would be really good at, um, helping us. You know, just answer some questions that we have, like historically, what, you know, just some things, I mean, she was, she, I, you know, she's retired now. Did a long time ago, but she was instrumental in all kinds of community things for sunny side, so she might be one that could tap into and get. Or maybe something.
Are you thinking, I was just thinking in terms of names, you wanna make it something, do you wanna make it just with a historical look, do you wanna make it look like? Um, um.
No, we went through so many.
Geographical, do you wanna make it, um. You know, just, just something really funky. I can't think of what that would be, but I was just thinking in terms of a his- historical, if you do. And you can do that geographical as well, because you've got the rattlesnake hills. Of course, they have the horse heaven down in Prosser, yeah, rattlesnakes, we have snipes. We got peanut hum, we got, you know, I mean, there's a couple of different ways that you guys can give your name, you don't have to be.
True.
You know, limited to Lower Valley, because that's kinda, everything's Lower Valley, can't tell you how many listings are.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. Yeah, there is.
I do think it's very broad, you know, cuz then we kinda lose the, like, what.
Yeah, like, how would you identify that with sunny side? Cuz you'd wanna be able to say that something Chamber, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, I need that.
I think we're getting more, more members if it says, but Lower Valley, I think will have more members.
Yeah. Cuz when you think of, yeah, Yakima or Tri-City, they refer to us, even in the news, let's look what's happening in the Lower Valley.
Yeah.
So.
Like the West Plains outside of Spokane. If it was good, it happened on the West Plains, if it was bad, it happened in Airway Heights.
Yeah.
Even when it didn't happen in Airway Heights, it happened in Spokane.
But, do we wanna do a vote on it? Or no?
Well, I'd say it's something to ponder, I mean, do you need that? Do you need to make that decision now, are you guys planning on by next month?
I mean, if we're trying to, we're trying to, yeah, cuz we've been at this last year.
I'm trying to progress.
No, that's what I'm, what I'm asking.
We have the same conversation.
Yeah, I don't.
Is your idea to basically have this in process by next meeting?
Lower Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Boom.
That's easy, I, I feel like more people will join because.
There are.
Yeah, like that's. That's wrong.
And we can do like a sun logo at the back.
Yeah.
Of course, sunny side back, so kinda like the Lower Valley and then the sun back there.
My wife. Yeah.
So, it represents sunny side in our.
Yeah.
Logo.
Doesn't say sunny side.
Yeah, a little.
Chamber of Commerce.
Lower Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Why not?
I mean, so.
I mean, we can say that.
Has it not?
Set up, you know, the Lower Valley Chamber of Commerce from sunny side.
I will change the name like five million times if I start it up.
Both sunny sides.
Maybe we will take over in the satellite and have satellite. Our chambers going to another city.
Change, I can change the strongest, um, city.
Yeah.
They, Yakima, now, and then Prosser guy went in there, now Grandview's.
I mean, you can even.
I can't.
I think the key, the key thing with the name change was just to minimize confusion at the IRS, so against other things you can do too.
We should have.
But they paid everything they owe, so there's nothing outstanding with the IRS.
Yeah, but we don't.
It wants to do if, you don't want the same.
You don't want those.
Maybe.
Being protected. Don't be.
Any connections.
So.
People had a hard time.
The same board members.
To go back and pass and stuff like that.
Okay, so how are you gonna pick these people for the steering committee, cuz that's another issue, and you don't want any troublemakers, I'm sorry, sorry.
Well, I mean, there's.
We needed to fill this. Second, you know, it's been.
Hey, we need checkers, they're gonna be there first, and so that's the case, a lot of them, but that's why I never win.
Yeah. Cuz that's what happened.
No, but we're talking at a different stage again. You know, it's serious.
Probably. I mean, I went to.
Oh.
I think money's on yours.
This.
But there was.
Oh, yeah, no, not.
That's all we're talking about, it's right now, a future will happen after.
I know.
We need to go, we need to go on this, figuring out the steering committee.
Okay.
Okay.
So, do we need the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, is that a steering committee or is that just a formation?
That's just a formation.
What do we need first, steering committee or information?
The steering committee will form the.
It can be the same.
Yeah, why not?
Nonprofit.
Yeah, it can be the same.
It can be the same thing.
Oh.
And then what you'll do is as you get through your steering committee, then you, you roll it over into your board, right?
The real deal is you guys.
So, it's gonna be the same thing, but not everyone sometimes wants to.
We are. Oh, good, I got you, so how many members do we need on steering committee?
Just us right here.
Okay, then that's us.
That's a lawyer.
Okay, we got that.
That's a lawyer. We'll make some calls.
Okay, so we're just looking for a lawyer for the steering committee?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next thing would be, who's gonna be, uh, the secretary, treasurer, vice president, president?
I don't know that you have that first steering committee.
Um, but because we're gonna come up with a five oh one C, we're gonna need it.
Oh, but I have.
The five oh one C will have to have those positions, the steering committee is just a bunch of people coming together to make a new organization, it's not a formal organization.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we need the lawyer before we get, determine these guys?
You need the five oh one C three.
Yeah.
To be established, once that happens, then whoever's on in the body of the five oh one C three.
Yeah, we don't need a lawyer before we.
Will, will.
Okay.
Figure out who the treasures are, or you guys will be at such a point where you'll, so that's. That's, sometimes what you'll do is on the very first meeting, is when you'll elect all those positions, other times you'll have those pre-assigned. So that everything just rolls, and then each of those people that start it, they have one year or whatever your alternate schedules are, and then the body will elect later.
Yeah.
Uh.
So, we are gonna start with.
I would do that.
Should we, should we vote, like, I, everything we're doing right now, the name and all that stuff, should we?
Yes.
Should we just go back and?
So, we don't have the same conversation next month?
Yes.
Yeah, we're good.
Come on back, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh.
For like all those in favor.
All those in favor of, uh, naming the Chamber of Commerce, new one that we are starting, Lower Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Wait, I.
Say aye.
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 I don't know if I have a vote, but I'm gonna say aye.
Yeah. Any ayes? Me opposed, no?
You're first, uh, was there a second or did you?
I seconded.
Right. Right? And what else do we?
We to vote on the, um.
Vote.
That Pearl is gonna take care of it, it's a lawyer, you're gonna have to vote.
Oh, yes.
You're gonna get the, she's gonna get her lawyer.
We're gonna like a.
And if you need help with that, you know, just send us a mass text and we'll, yep, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
And then the next thing we have to do then is vote that we're gonna do, apply for a five oh one, there's, not vote for that, but we're gonna apply, apply for a five oh one C.
Yeah, and the business license and anything, any other paperwork we need, and Karen, will you help me with that?
Okay, so Pearl is gonna handle that part then to the, Pearl, I'm just saying, right, I'm not telling you.
Yes. No, yeah.
Okay, so Pearl, Pearl and Karen are gonna handle the business license. And the application.
For the five oh one C.
Right.
And any other forms we need to get this straight.
Okay. Okay.
But, remember, like Karen said, in order to get started on this, we need a president and a vice president, secretary and treasurer, just for the paperwork, you can vote later on.
We. Yeah. Exactly, it doesn't mean that you guys are stuck.
This is your. Corporation.
Yes.
So, let us get that down now then.
Okay.
Let's just do it.
That, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So, now it just needs someone like.
Who wants to be president, vice president?
Well, I think Pearl, if you're, I'm seriously, if you're gonna do the, no, no, you're gonna do the licensing and stuff.
Yeah.
No one's gonna hold you to that, but I mean, like, you're, if you're gonna start that part. Trump hardly gotta say you're gonna be the president.
I can be vice. Karen can be president.
True.
Cuz she's starting the paperwork and I'll be your vice.
True, you know how to.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Karen be president.
So, what does a treasurer do?
We're gonna be collecting.
Collecting.
Collecting all the pieces. Probably do those the membership.
And some damn boys.
Exactly. We're.
Latisha.
Latisha. Then we can be treasurer.
Updates the, the, everyone, our ballots, what we can do, what we can't.
Okay.
I'm so.
Let me, let me will be.
There you go.
Let me will be.
President. So, the president is Pearl.
Excuse me, you have president.
And Karen, and no, Karen.
Karen's president, Pearl is vice.
President. Pearl is vice. Um, Latisha is the, um, treasurer.
Treasurer.
Treasurer. And we just need a secretary.
So, you, you can combine them, but if you.
Secretary writes all my notes.
I, I typically have it.
And they're listed on that.
I think there was some of the documents with the, with the state.
Uh-huh, yeah.
The secretary.
Yes, the secretary treasurer is often a shared position under one thing.
So.
Oh, Julia, you could be, you could be secretary.
However, um, I recommend having individuals, just because it just needs to be that way.
Thank you. I think you should.
Doctor Chacon.
Yeah, it's better, it's cleaner, individuals.
Yeah.
Just take notes.
Take notes.
Of everything we give you.
The chamber stuff.
Okay.
We can, we can, I'll, I'll help you with that.
Okay.
I will help, I will help.
Okay, with that. Okay, with that.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
Awesome, okay, that helps.
And usually, usually officers on board, but not necessarily.
Thank you, Sarah. So you got, then the.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna establish everything.
No, it's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be at the steering committee, right?
It's gonna be us for now.
Oh, yeah.
Which is when I get it going, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So just let's.
And then we need some more guidance from this book, from the national, like how produce structures and dooms and how you perceive.
That's another thing we need to talk about.
I think that's what we need to help.
Your structure from.
We. From Pat, and I can, I can get a hold of Pat.
Yeah. We should probably have a meeting aside from this meeting for that, don't you think?
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We should have a meeting outside.
Picture that, I mean.
I have this.
Some, that's something.
For.
Okay. You guys, you guys thinking, you guys wanna do another lunchtime one right now?
Next week, yeah.
Can we meet here or somewhere else, yes, we don't know, it's gonna.
Oh, it's.
Definitely not here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Wanna do it for us?
To give a test.
This is an official meeting of the C E D commission. That will be a meeting for the chamber, you know, it should be.
Chamber.
Chamber.
Maybe for the.
Should be.
The first chamber meeting.
So I mean, yeah, so just.
So then I have that conflict of interest.
Okay, we can have it on my office, we have a conference.
Yeah.
Let the has a conference.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We can do it next week on Tuesday.
What's next week?
Is today Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have my other schedule on me, but.
Have Thursday or Friday.
Neither.
What day?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday or Friday, um.
I can't do Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
I don't have my schedule, so I can't even sign it.
I don't know.
Maybe can we send the uh Derek, could you send maybe a.
I really shouldn't be.
No, yeah, I'll do it, I'll send something.
Oh.
Perla, send something and then maybe we can get, if it doesn't happen next week, maybe if.
The following week?
How was the following week?
How about the following week?
Yeah, so.
Okay, the following week, we're gonna shoot for Tuesday.
Which is the eighteen? Sounds good.
March eighteen?
Uh Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday, March eighteen, gives us enough time.
I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
At Latisha's office.
And you maybe have a fill out the application, get that stuff all ready to go.
Yeah, you might get have that done by the, we could just move it.
It's not, it's one of these things that I think is much more complicated to try to explain than I can.
Do you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's a pretty straightforward form.
For the Saturday?
Kinda like.
Yeah.
Creating a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of myself, yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, but that's good that we have these names right down, so you already have that.
The text on here that that will, the the text is that the the getting the final, even that's not that complicated.
Okay. Yeah. Alright, cool, guys, isn't this exciting?
Yes.
So.
Awesome, okay, so.
Just a little clarification, these people are gonna be the officers that are listed in the um.
I think those are.
Estoration.
As the five oh one C six articles incorporation, okay, and that's good, because that'll just allow for easier transition.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What you guys do once the chamber starts, whether you continue on or you, alright, I've done my part.
That's a good thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Step up.
Then we'll have them start meeting outside of this, it's like the attorney fit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's when it can be.
A lot of times, my recommendation is is generally you have a business that hurts and it rotates, and part of what you're on, everybody gets to see your business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's also not bursting someone over successful people hosting these events, so. That's how I would do it with regard to um with regard to your actual meeting spaces, eventually, maybe the chamber will have enough fun or whatnot to where they have it on the building.
Yeah, I see, fifty, I'm gonna get up. Like the deuce or high.
Yeah, it's.
And I figure out what you can do.
Let's see, four hundred, five hundred dollars for your chamber dues, and a lot of it depends on the.
Yeah.
But instead of like thirty five dollars.
Is it based on the number of employees?
The number of employees. And then they have like big bigger packages where they offer more stuff.
Right.
And you pay more.
Add.
I did the paper engrager, I paid um, I can remember now, but I got like the one of the biggest package.
Wow. Was Karen like a paid person on the other, the other chamber?
Yes.
So with like paid staff, like.
Eventually, you'll get there, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, once it gets like big enough, have um something to do with everything.
I know, I'll be involved for a while, just to facilitate meetings, so we can go through and be successful and people don't get.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do you want, do you want Pat Fidel to be at the, at the next meeting, or do you wanna wait until the next meeting, just let me know so I can see if she's available?
Yeah. Controlling. Oh, yeah, she's great.
Or do you wanna wait until the next meeting, just let me know so I can see if she's available?
I'd be good to invite her.
Yeah.
I'd have her show up to your first chamber.
See, I'll just, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Cause she could get her ID, she can get her ID.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna start differentiating meetings, chamber meetings means. Like the one you're having next week with you, C E D is here, otherwise, I think we might get confused, so, but I would have her show up at that first, if she's available.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll ask her if she's even, and she'll do it, yeah, she's great, she may, she may.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May decide not to, but she's, I know.
And just be clear, so we let her know, we're not, we just want you to talk to us real quick, and that's it, no other responsibilities.
Yes.
Alright, guys, so we're gonna move on to this letter C, discuss launching that nonprofit proposal.
Alright.
Yeah.
I wish, I wish Mike was in here, cause this is kind of a this thing, yeah, I had this on, um, but this, my understanding of what's going on there is.
I know. Yeah. Uh-huh.
Yeah, we we've looked up at these folks, um, to some degree, I don't know exactly how much, um, work they're doing with us. But initially, it was on the, you know, we do stock the program, was trying to kind of figure something else, or something out there. Then it kind of came out, and this is what he came up with, where it's almost what you're seeing here is a um. I live in the main street, it's the only thing that throws it out a little bit, but it's almost like a park or a.
Nonprofit parks.
It's a parks and recreation nonprofit, um, that's very common, um, in fact. The city, well, in my opinion, needs to do this, because case in point, Airway Heights built a regional rec center, um. But one of the things that they did was they also established a parks and rec, not nonprofits, so that they could catch. Funding from foundations, the foundations will give to nonprofits, they don't generally. They're not as free with governments, um, so there's a lot of grants out there, community service use, things like that, that a nonprofit can apply for. That a city or a city organization or a government can not, so, um. Yes, we have our parks and rec program, when it's running, um, but this, and I, a five oh one C three, that's park related, um. Or rec, so I mean, I think that main street is a little oddball in that, but it seems like that's a separate, it almost seems like this guy's talking about five different. Actually nonprofits that should be operating in the city, and I don't disagree with that. You create these nonprofits, they go from funding, you know, in contact with the city, um, in fact, the parks and recreation, um. One at Airway Heights, the council, if I remember right, this is a little bit, five oh one C three, but it might have been the park board, I can't remember off the top of my head, but, you know.
Put there correctly.
It was an appointed group, and and it was targeted purely to city focused events and stuff like that, um. So that's, you know, so that's why these things, again, pool operations, we can get money for capital expenses from the building, but we almost never can get operational. Funds, um, they love to let us fill it, but they won't let us span it. So, um, then the youth sports, you know, again, it's, in fact, almost all of your youth sports that you're engaging with, they're all nonprofit, there's a reason for it. Trust me, and the bigger ones like surf, they get made, um, you know, they're making money. Um, that's the same too, nonprofit, all it means is that all your profits get reinvested back into the business, it doesn't mean that everybody's volunteer. Um, and that's where the chamber starts eventually paying staff, is out of the chamber's money, because they're of sufficient size that they can do it. With that size comes a lot of work, you gotta pay someone to do it. Gets to a point in the scale that you can't do it with just volunteers anymore.
Okay, so back to this right here, so Mike brought in these people and talked to Davis, what, how do they, Davis Consulting, do they get paid, or who, who's Davis Consulting?
I actually, I I know of Davis Consulting, what I do not know is whether or not this was a, hey, yeah, I'll help you out, and maybe this gave it to us, um, whether we're still working. No, actually, I I I have, we we, I've been in a few meetings where the people are like, you know, I can throw something together pretty fast. I'm not seeing anything unique or weird on this, so, I mean, I could have come up with this pretty fast too, if I was asked to do it, this is pretty general, um. Everything here, where it's nice is, um, how it's got it broke into the face timeline and stuff like that, but, um. But yeah, I don't know exactly, you know, where Davis Consulting is in the process.
Who are they and where they're at, remind that, like where? Where are they, are they like on the internet, or they?
No, no, no.
Are they in Washington or?
They're they're in Washington, I don't know if, I don't think they're in Yakma, I think they're in uh, out of the tri-cities. But they may be out of the west side too, Davis Consulting, I've seen.
Well.
Solutions, Davis Consulting Solutions, you got.
There's somebody that we've, yeah.
And so they.
No. No.
That's very close from here.
Yeah, no, about, um. But the problem is.
Davis Consulting's space revolves the creation of a new nonprofit organization dedicated to fostering community engagement and development in sunny side.
Richland, Washington.
I was wondering if it was in El Hitzman.
That original. However, there's consulting group incorporated out of.
There's one in Seattle, Vegas Consulting Group LLC.
And Davis Consulting Company Profile, kind of from Washington, so we got two.
Well, either way, I'm sure Mike is.
I'm quite the same, I've 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 seen.
Like the. But the need is there, I mean, doesn't hurt to.
We've, we've. They're.
More nonprofits.
We're not the only ones who've used these, I've seen these guys, they're they're brought in a lot, um, or at least Davis Consulting, but I'm probably on multiple Davis Consultants, that maybe I'm hearing about a different one.
Nice.
Yeah, there's another one, David, it's private consulting.
Do we have to, do we have to vote on anything, or this is just a heads up to what is going on?
Well.
Can we, can we, can we move this discussion to when he's here next time?
What?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, cause they can't be waiting.
Yeah. Like bring like.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's neat though, I mean, it's good.
Yeah.
I think you wanted it to be, um. So yeah, please, go ahead and look this over, unfortunately, I just don't know much more, but it it is pretty.
Okay.
It is, so the long is short, it's a plan to create a stable funding source for various things that can get cut when the budget gets hit.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because these things, each of these five, um. Are separate nonprofits, and this, you know, and there's a lot to it, because. This group obviously can't be the board for five nonprofits, plus the chamber, plus the C E D submission, oh yeah, and you have businesses and.
Too much, yeah. Yeah.
Whatever organizations you're in, so, um, this is me, I.
Yeah.
We read that one. I'm superhero.
But, um, he may be looking for, yeah, I don't know what he's looking for on this.
Okay, we can.
Let's know the.
Looks good, it's a good heads up.
Well, add it to our future.
Okay. So, any other items from committee numbers?
Yeah, put it on for next one.
Um, I do want, just something that's not really. You, maybe you remember the Spirit of Sunny Side Bank, was that anything? So, a lot of your businesses will probably be being asked to decorate a cable from probably the sunny side, like, cause I believe they're in charge of that.
Okay.
But.
I've been approached before, but it's been.
I'd be interested to be, I don't know.
I'm not sure who's in charge, but maybe at the next, when's the next inquiry moment?
In twenty first week, twenty first? Did you call for my [inaudible 00:39:20].
Maybe, maybe, maybe I can.
Reach out, maybe the.
Reach out.
I can, I could reach out, anyone?
You know who it is?
I can find one of the.
I think. It's. Oh.
So.
Like hey, it's March twenty first.
Um, based off of the old. Business uh list, go around and actually drive and see, you know what I mean?
Business.
I could probably expect for the V I and practitioners to.
Yes.
Value. They don't give everyone to. We have emails too.
I remember that.
Okay, so.
We can talk on the email, if we try to get a speaker, so that way we'll be getting.
From businesses.
Cause it involves businesses, the only reason.
Okay, so what is the Spirit of Sunny Side event?
April twenty, the last Friday.
Who, what is March five first? How is this?
Okay, I understand.
April twenty sixth.
What's it come to join?
Princess, does it?
I don't know, I know.
The big queen, you're going to.
Soul.
Did you say on Friday night, it's gonna be.
It's like eight hundred seventy five dollars.
Where's the meeting, August first, where's the meeting now?
That's the rule made for the chamber.
Okay, the order is for the restaurant approval.
Will you check, will you?
I'll text, you text us the, cause I wanna come, so the Spirit of Sunny Side is April?
Last, it's the last Friday of April.
I think twenty. Twenty fifth? April twenty fifth, okay.
With a question mark, okay.
Yeah, I put a question right there, cause I know.
But what was the restaurant thing you were saying?
We're waiting for Towering Sister.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
I think Dina or Erica said that they would call.
Awesome.
Someone did.
Somebody did say that.
And I'll try to make it, I've been terrible this past, Friday's crazy.
Yeah, I know.
I know.
She forgot about it.
No, no, well, I've been doing a lot of open houses and stuff too, so Friday is is.
Well, that's good.
Okay, that's great.
That's a good.
You've got some really cute ones too.
Look, the twenty sixth.
The twenty sixth, twenty sixth, twenty sixth.
Oh, it's a Sunday.
Okay.
That was a spirit of sunny side.
Get a table, that'd be cool.
Okay.
Yeah, for all.
Right, I think this would be really good.
We should, we should get a table.
We should get a table, okay.
Just as our group, as the commission, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're.
We're the plaque, it's fine, I know what we're doing.
A side, we're doing a sunny side.
I'm looking for them.
That's the, the twenty sixth is a Saturday, so it's.
It is, it is on.
It's a Saturday and it's working Friday.
Okay.
It is on the Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, I just saw.
I'm not, I'm just saying in the past.
Okay, classic. Can you, some flyers, we need flyers for our businesses.
Yeah, she just, Jackie's got a flyer.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Like yesterday.
You need to all the sisters.
Bring some, bring on, to bring some.
Yes.
Yeah, already.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can then tell her that we want a table.
Yeah, we need a.
Yeah.
Yes.
We need a.
With a little, with a little note card that says.
She's, she's, she's coming, she's.
Sure.
Well, so I talk to her, I always see her, so I'm like, I just saw her, like, can you come, come sisters, how much are the people standing to your, you know?
Oh, okay. Oh, good.
Yeah. Come, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
That's really good.
Tell, and tell her we want a table, we'll just.
Yes, okay, um, any other items from committee or staff, items from staff members?
I don't have anything specific, um, just my understanding, we'll bring back the tips, consulting stuff, um, then, um. I'm assuming we'll get reports, I'll have a a line on there for a report on progress, um, goals, and then a report on progress with regard to chamber.
And feel free to update us with a text, with a good text, like, hey, we got it, there's a call here.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody here have.
Do you have a, you know, direct that number, or do you have?
And now you.
Cause we asked Benius, Benius email.
Cause I text a lot, so.
Oh, no.
You do, you don't have.
He's not a texting number, oh darn.
I'm not a texter.
Oh, darn.
I especially with this type of stuff, no, I want to have a conversation, I don't wanna wonder whether or not you just got offended by what I texted him.
Fine. Yeah. Why you chat? I like to refer back to it, be like, hey, it's not he said, she said, it's proof.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what.
And if you have that concern in your conversation, you don't have a problem. You don't trust that I'm gonna tell you.
I know.
Straight.
No.
We're gonna have problems.
I should let me.
Yeah, very good, text us.
Yeah. Honestly, I'm.
Lot of traps, traps and explanations, I think you saw.
I feel like multi-diopter, that's why.
Only thing I remember.
Alright, um.
I am Gen X.
Okay, next meeting?
I adopt technology by choice, not.
We're just gonna figure out the future, Jennifer.
That's what I hate, I don't.
Yes, that's what she just talked about.
Converse. Text.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
After three times, they might call me.
Yeah.
Cause.
Makes sense.
Well, because.
It's okay, I can, right, so we figured out the future. We got the next meeting set for Tuesday, April first, is that correct on everybody's?
I always question April first meetings.
Right?
If I show up and no one's here.
If I show up and no one's here, is that right?
Yes, I, I do also have that.
I will come to your house and it won't be pretty.
Alright, so meeting is adjourned at one thirty eight?
I'd say you guys got a lot done today.
Yes, great job, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.